Everybody would like to call the meeting. The whole order is Monday, March 25th, 2024. We have got 7:08 called delay. Wrapped up our special meeting. We do have a lengthy agenda this evening. We're going to try and go through it as expeditiously as we can. All right, we'll start with items from Senior Director of Operations. Good evening, Director.
Thank you, sir. Here are a few items. I think I've got a small, medium, and large item for you.
Okay.
We'll start with the largest item this evening. But we're here tonight to present to you folks GMP one, or Construction Contract Number One, for 825 Texan Drive. I do have my friends from MSA in Elfrid right behind me if there are any additional questions or questions that I'm unable to answer. But as you guys know, we were here, I believe, in January and asked for permission to bid for the entire project. I think, and then we also asked for permission to bond as well. We did indicate at that particular point in time that there would be two construction contracts come before you. This is the first of those two. The second one is due before you folks, I believe, on May 13th, and we'll get into that in a little bit. As you also know, we would be going out for two different bond issuances. The first, the amount of about $20 million, I'm sorry, about $30 million, and the second for the balance of the project there. So our folks from Elfrid have bid GMP contract number one. This is an amendment to their original contract, which we signed back in January of 2023. This bid package was for 16 different disciplines. It was for 16 different disciplines over the entire course of the project itself. Fifty bids were received in total for the project itself. The city, Elfrid, MSA, we sat down and we did bid review on each one of these 16 different, these 16 different disciplines and are making recommendation this evening, tonight, to enter into an amended contract with Elfrid in the amount of $20,327,613, which represent about, which represents about 30% or so of the overall construction, or actually 30% of the total project, which also includes the building and so on. If it was just the construction cost, I believe it's about 30, 35% of the overall construction cost of the project. In total, we have realized about $365,000 in budget, in budget savings against the original budget that was presented back in January before this chamber here. I know at that particular point in time, there was conversation about DEI initiatives and goals that we could set in this particular contract. I believe when Mr. Quinn was before you folks, I think he said something to the effect of asking for anywhere from 12 to 12 to 15%, but then in reality seeing 15 to 20% on projects coming to fruition. Right now, with just this, about again, one-third of the contract, we're seeing 14.36% of the contract total being awarded to DEI compliant folks. In addition, about 73%, and I'm sorry, that number is actually incorrect. We had some adjustments, about 69%, and I'll make sure that that gets adjusted with the clerk, but 69% of this particular GMP one is also being awarded to, to union folks. When we had met, and I think even in the packet, there were a couple of TBDs, TBDs remaining. Those TBDs are filled in on your screen above, but obviously they didn't make, make an amendment to the package itself. I think I already mentioned that we received 50 bids over those 16 different disciplines. And the one additional note that I'd like to make is under that union subcontract, or column, rather, towards the bottom where those two NAS are, those are strictly for equipment-only purchases. So those are just to buy the generator itself and then to buy the electrical switching gear that would end up in the building itself. So bond issuance number one, to go to the actual funding, right? Bond issuance number one was sold last Wednesday, which then allocates the $20,327,000 to this particular project. When those bonds actually close, I believe on April 10th, those bonds would close and then we would have encumbered at that particular point in time, the proceeds from that bond issuance. So the administration is respectfully requesting an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended agreement with Elfrid Construction listed as GMP number one. The administration is also requesting waiver and emergency to lock in the pricing and to issue the notice to proceed on or around April 11th after those funds became, become available. And then the final note here on the report is the dollars associated with this request were appropriated in ordinance 05 of 2024, of 2024. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. Appreciate your presentation. Any discussion from my colleagues? President Bowers.
Director, and perhaps it's a better question for Chief Spence, but I note in here that one of the items, at least a couple of the items may specifically be for the police department. Could you speak to, could you speak to that? Could you speak to the police department being a priority and this, of this, of this project?
Yes, so I believe you were referring to the firing range equipment. I believe you're referring to the firing range equipment and then obviously part of the, part of the basement where the firing range would be, would go. One of the things that Elfrid and MSA have done, they've gone out to design, for design assist services with firing range companies. We reviewed three different, three different companies in this particular regard that specialize only in the construction and installation, if you would, of the firing range itself. That's the number that you see on, under firing range equipment at that $1.52 million. What those folks do is they basically come in, they do the full and complete design, if you would, of the, of the square box, right? We're building, Elfrid and MSA are designing the square box, and then the firing range folks come in and they put the finishing touches on that, on that box. You folks were, many of you folks were in Westerville. The same company that was contracted in Westerville is also being contracted here called Range Systems. They, they have air handling specialists on, on their team along with any other specializations that are necessary in order for the range to function as a, as a tactical range as opposed to just, and what I would refer to as an old-school range where you see the lanes and the targets down and the target comes to you. This range is fully open and then, and then the officer at that particular has, the officer has the, the ability to engage and he moves or she moves in proximity to the targets as opposed to the targets coming back in proximity to them. That makes the range very versatile. As you guys are also aware, that range also functions as the storm shelter. So therefore, it also has to have certain qualities as well. There's been a lot of conversation in the last few weeks about that, about the basement specifically for the storm, the storm shelter components, but then also secondary ingress and egress out and how do we clean, clean the range and those types of things. So there's been some minor modifications to the range itself. But yes, just the 1.5 in the, on the slide here and inside of the packet is for the full installation of the range equipment inside of that basement structure.
And would the elevators and earthwork include the earthwork that's necessary to build out this public safety facility?
Yes, correct.
And are these specialty elevators as well that would be, are we talking, no, I see a shake back there, not, not for moving our potentially inmates or they would be?
Removing.
Detainees.
Through.
Detainees, moving detainees through the police department. Would the elevators be, are they unique, special in any way? Okay.
No, the elevator, the, the holding facility is on the first floor, so the detainee would have no need to traverse in the, in the elevator. That person could, I guess, go up to the detective's area, but more than likely if they're in holding, the detective would go down into the holding facility to conduct any interviews.
Okay.
The elevator itself is secured, so even if a member of the public was to get into the first floor police department without, with, without a badge, they can't access the second and or third floor or even the basement for that matter. This, there's, this is for the new elevator on the police side only. This doesn't include the, there's no changes to the elevators on the, on the existing building itself.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? I had a couple of questions here. Thank you, Director. Appreciate all the work that you and our partners have done on this so far. A lot of work has certainly been done to get us to this point, so I appreciate it. Can you speak a little bit to the percentage, the, the union labor and how that was calculated using, is that by dollar amount, number of employees, number of different contracts that are awarded? You know, if I have five possible contracts, you know, four are for $10 and one is for a million dollars, you know, does that outweigh, you know, how does that work in the calculation?
So I know, and then I'll branch, speak to some of the other nuances of the union this, of the contract itself, but the 69% that I spoke about is just a simple percentage of contracts being awarded here and you, and using union labor shops. Unlike the DEI number, the DEI number is, while you see asterisks in there, those are just proportions and that's what that bottom note is on the slide. So, Mr. Quinn, I don't know if you can add anything to the union question?
Just have to put that on there.
Good evening, Mr. Quinn.
So we didn't calculate it by dollar or by manpower. You know, looking at it right now, I would say that, that we're probably pretty consistent with the 60-plus percent in union participation by dollar value. Manpower-wise, it'd be kind of tough to quantify that until we really get into the construction and be able to really look at that. We did mostly use union contractors. It was mostly the low, apparent low bid or, once we bid leveled, they were the bidder that we selected because they had the scope covered and once we leveled out with the other bidder, they were, they were competitive. So there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to gain more union labor.
Would you say that our projection of, I think, 69% is consistent with other projects? You have worked on for entities or clients that have been seeking that?
Yes.
Very broad generalization, I understand.
So we, we do work with Franklin County and City of Columbus a lot, and they require, you know, union participation in certain areas. The City of Columbus often engages in a community benefits agreement on their projects, which pretty much makes the entire project union. We have seen some challenges with that and other regards. There's a little bit of conflict between that and diversity participation. There is not a lot of diverse union contractors around, so it's a little bit of dichotomy when you're trying to go all union and also get diversity at the same time. So that's one of the challenges that we've seen.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Separate question here. I noticed later on that sales tax is excluded from the calculation. I'm assuming that is normal and expected.
It is normal for a public agency, yes.
Perfect. All right. I think that's all I had. Okay, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Requesting waiver of second reading and declaring an emergency, so regular agenda on the first?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item, please, Director.
So my second item, as I struggle here to stop sharing. My second item here is an amendment to the capital improvement plan. On August 21st, 2023, this body here adopted the first-ever capital improvement plan for the 2023 to 2027 City of Gahan Capital Improvement Plan. This plan established, obviously, the CIP Advisory Committee. That committee was, was intended to serve to gather information and assist and inform the administration on priorities, projects, and such. One of the things that, that the city attorney had brought to our attention was is that we really did establish a public body and therefore that public body was required to send notice and then have meeting minutes and then, and have a meeting publicized, obviously. One of the challenges with that particular train of thought was is that the mayor, myself, senior director of administrative services, and then the finance director sit on that committee, and then three of you fine folks. Well, four people make a corps. So how can the internal folks have a meeting without it being noticed and such and have conversations that are necessary in order to bring forth amendments to the, to the CIP, to the, to the capital plan itself and to this body here? So in working with the city attorney, it was determined that if the body, the CIP Advisory Committee, is making recommendations to the administration and not to city council, we could still meet internally and still have our conversations and then ultimately amend the plan. I think the intent is 100% the same. I don't know that as we sat here a year, a year ago in August of last year, that we thought that we were bringing up a plan. I will make note, and I will quote some words that were written in the plan. I believe it's in the, the first paragraph of section two. But as this plan matures, policies should be reviewed and adjusted that streamline the way the plan is managed and how projects are incorporated into the plan, and that is simply what we're doing here tonight. So you guys see a redlined version of, of the section two, 2.0, and then one part of section number, or section three that has been adjusted. And basically, the crux of the matter there is, is that we've changed it from making recommendations to city council to making recommendations to the administration. Nothing else changes at that particular point in time. We will still make regular reports to this particular body if we need to make supplemental requests or add projects for that matter. We're coming to you folks through the regular course of business at the same time. So the administration is respectfully requesting an ordinance to adopt the 2023, 2023 to 2027 Gahan Capital Improvement Plan as amended. We are also requesting waiver and emergency so that we can continue to, to meet as a, so the CIP Advisory Committee can meet here, I believe, April 7th, maybe, 9th, something like that, early in April, so that we can continue to conduct business and move, and move this process along.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion from my colleagues? Any discussion from my colleagues? On for the regular agenda on the first then because of the request for waiver? Thank you, Director. Next item, please.
Next item, item number three. This is my small item, if you can believe it. The, the resolution adopting, we're requesting a resolution adopting the SUECO updated 2024 to 2038 solid waste management plan. The City of Gahan partners with the Solid Waste Authority, SUECO, on projects related to solid waste management, the reduction, reduction and education thereof. To continue in this partnership, the city must adopt SUECO's 2024 to 2038 solid waste management plan. In adopting this plan, the city will have access to their number of programs that they offer, which include waste reduction grants. I believe Mr. Wybensinger and, and folks from SUECO were here a couple of weeks ago. Other grants that we've received, food composting as another example. We were the recycling right pilot agency, if you would, for SUECO a couple of years ago. So that's one of the, one of the programs that they offer. But the biggest, the biggest offering is the, the trash and recycling bidding, bidding consortium, right? So we're part of a consortium throughout Franklin County that creates that economy of scale that, and that contract then runs through SUECO and then we have the ability to, to bid and award, if you would, based on that economy of scale that, that SUECO and our other partners, our other municipal partners offer us. They offer hazardous waste disposal events. We'll be hosting an event, I believe it's in the end of June, for hazardous waste disposal for residents inside of the City of Gahan to be able to bring their hazardous waste items to, to an event. Obviously, these would be things that aren't accepted here when we do our shredded event. Obviously shredded is paper, but we also do the electronic recycling. An example there would be those TVs that, that they don't, that they don't take, car batteries, tires, those types of things would be available at this particular event. Public education and many, many other programs, and many other programs that they offer. So the administration is respectfully requesting a resolution adopting the 2024 to 2038 solid waste management plan, which I believe was also attached to, to the agenda.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion? Mr. Renner?
Thank you. I 100% support this, so just want to be clear. Where does it house? Who's, who's authority? Will this be housed under you? Is it directly to the mayor or where is it?
I think it depends on the, the item.
Yeah.
Right, so like the?
The management of this program, I should say. The management of this plan.
The management of the, it depends on the program, right? So if we're, if we're talking about the hazardous waste disposal event as an example, right, that's being run through public service, so, so does the local waste contract. I think the management of the plan itself is largely done by, by the folks at SUECO itself. Obviously, we partner and there's conversations around the plan, and that happens through a variety of folks, mainly public service, but obviously the mayor's involved, I'm involved, Mr. Wybensinger, depending on the type of grant that it might be. There are, there are a multitude of folks that would be involved in the management of the plan.
And what are the timelines on the SUECO grants?
They all vary.
Do you know what the deadlines are?
Yeah, they all, they all vary and they all vary.
Do they? Okay.
I mean, because they're different programs, there's different types, but we need to adopt their solid waste management plan in order to qualify for those, for those grants.
100%.
Yep.
But I want to get before you and the mayor, and actually I have a grant idea, so.
I'm sorry, you have a?
I have a grant idea.
Okay, thank you. We can do that for sure.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, this is a resolution, so is people okay with consent for next week? All right, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Next up, we have items from the Department of Administrative Services. Good evening, Director.
Good evening. I have a request for ordinance for supplemental appropriation in the amount of $197,255 from the unappropriated, unencumbered general fund balance to the finance contract services. If you'll remember, in 2023, the city transitioned property and liability insurance coverage from the Ohio Municipal Joint Self-Injured Pool to the Central Ohio Risk Management Association or the CORMA pool. That decision was presented and approved by city council in 2023. On March 13th of 2024, the city received a notification that the OMGSP pool is terminating operations effective April 1st. To protect their current and past members from open, known, and potential unknown claim liabilities, the pool has elected to purchase a reinsurance policy through Great American Family. That policy effectively transfers its liability losses to Great American Insurance Company. The total cost of the policy is $2.2 million. Unfortunately, the pool's assets were not sufficient to cover 100% of the cost of that premium. Therefore, per the pool's participation agreement, dealing with closing up that pool, the city was, is being assessed the $197,255. This amount was determined by the pool's actuary and voted on by the board members. We have asked a variety of questions from the pool and received answers. We worked with our current pool as well to get answers and to clarify the amount that we owe. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then I failed to mention on the report, we would request waiver as well. The bill that we received on March 13th was due upon receipt and the pool is ceasing activities on March 31st of this year, so they do need the funds to pay for the new reinsurance policy.
Thank you, Director. Well, seeing none, on for regular then, given the request for waiver on the first then.
And I do want to note as well, we did ask if there could be additional assessments, and that is a to be determined. If the pool's current assets are not large enough to cover outstanding claims or any future claims, I could be back before you requesting additional supplementals as we would likely get assessed as well for those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, items from the Department of Engineering. Good evening, Director.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Weaver, members of council. I have three items for your consideration this evening. Two are related to the sidewalk program, related to 2025 efforts as well as a resolution of necessity with respect to the Winridge Bridge replacement. The, the first item is a resolution identifying the 2025 sidewalk maintenance program area. Through state statute, this otherwise allows us to go through the assessment process for those that otherwise are, are within the program. We, we intend to issue notice to the property owners in the target area for the 25 program, allotting them the opportunity to opt out and self-perform the work. They can do that all the way up to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving by pulling a right-of-way permit, and that would further extend the opportunity to, to perform the work through a contractor of their choosing through early spring of next year. So basically giving them almost a year to, to self-remedy if they otherwise choose to. For those that are within the program that otherwise do not opt out, they'll be a, a part of the, the competitive bid process as we move forward with the 2025 program. So, I can pause there for any questions as it relates to the 2025 program and then go into the look-back program.
Yes. Thank you, Director. Any discussion on this item? Mrs. McGregor?
If they, if they opt out, then they, the city doesn't pay 50% of their cost, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's my only question.
Ms. Jones?
Just a timing question. So, whether I opt in or out, so if I'm opting out, I can do that by, you said Thanksgiving of this year, but repairs and all of that is still next year?
So.
If you opt in, I guess.
If, if the, if a resident who has served notice that they've got defects and choose to opt out of the program, they can self-perform the work by pulling a right-of-way permit anytime from the date of notice all the way up to pulling the right-of-way permit the Wednesday before Thanksgiving this year. That would then otherwise allow the contractor to perform that work anytime this calendar year, all the way up to, say, mid-April of, of next year.
Thank you very much, Director. Let's see, this was a resolution. Are folks okay with consent for next week on this item? Thank you very much. And before we move on, my understanding is that the, the live stream is down, is?
It's up.
Back up again?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, please, Director.
The second item is a, at the request of council as we're going through, or a council member or two through the budget appropriations process, budget hearings late in 2023, a request was made of staff to explore a look-back program, looking back to 2021, 2022, and 2023 street programs to bring those facilities up to a maintenance standard. Staff has, has looked at that and assembled a grouping of streets, making a recommendation for that program area, following similar suit to the process just described for the 2025 street maintenance efforts. So this would be a, a look-back program that would add in addition to those that are be, being programmed for street maintenance in 2025.
Any discussion on this item?
I have a quick question. So looking back at those streets, does that mean they were already had maintenance done and they need more?
So they had street maintenance performed, the sidewalk maintenance was not otherwise covered.
Got it, okay, thank you.
ADA ramps may have otherwise been covered, but the individual sidewalk panels along a property owner's frontage was not.
Got it, thank you. And these streets that were, were they only streets that were rebuilt or also ones that had like the overlay?
So with, with overlay.
So I, I was thinking about this today, actually. One of the streets in my neighborhood had an overlay last year, but the sidewalks were not, have not been touched. I don't know where that falls in all of this.
So that will be a future program, so we've allocated a certain set of streets for programming for 2025. We intend to have a similar program for 2026 and 2027 to account for the totality of the 21, 22, and 23 street efforts that occurred in years past.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, Director, for bringing this forward. This is, I think this is great catch-up and something that we need to do, and I appreciate you bringing it back after you said you would, so thank you. The town hall just happened a couple of weeks ago.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that these residents were made aware that they were in the program area prior to that town hall happening.
So the town hall was for 2024 efforts.
Okay.
So we'll have a follow-up conversations with those residents moving forward.
So we have plenty of, of lead time to get information out to these neighbors. Okay, awesome, thank you so much. I think the community is gonna, they really appreciate this, and these are neighbor, these are neighborhoods that were really affected by street trees, so this is, this is going to be a really impactful fix to a lot of our residents. Thank you.
Assuming this is all approved, will these both be like combined to just the, the two of them together, the 2025 program, or will they remain separate?
So, we're evaluating that within this past 20, the 2024 LET projects, we had a 2022 sidewalk program from the legacy system, if you will, and the 2024 street maintenance. We had, I want to say five or six responsive bidders on the sidewalk only, the concrete flat work, so we're evaluating, want to have that flexibility to get competitive bids. There are aspects where if we are rebuilding a street, it makes the most sense to have that contractor as they're doing the driveways and setting all the grades and so forth to perform that sidewalk-related work with, with that program. So we're evaluating the, the pros and cons to that.
Thank you.
Mrs. McGregor?
And when I look down this list of these streets, these are all like in one area of the city. Is there, are you going section by section? Because usually the sidewalk program has been sort of like scattered all over the city, but this is primarily like in one general area.
So in selecting tho, those streets, I mean, it's, it's a matter of trying to get that contractor in one area, hitting that area, getting the work done, and then moving to the, moving to the next. So we anticipate as we move through the balance of the 22, 2021, 2022, and 2023, those streets that were otherwise, had maintenance or reconstruction activities occur, that will, will be hitting those areas in, in the upcoming 26 and 27 look-back programs.
Anything else on this item? I'll just add my thanks as well. Happy to see this coming back with the look-back program, and you, you preemptively addressed the question of, that I had of how many look-back programs we can anticipate over a few years. So, happy to see this moving forward. Consent on the first, okay with folks? All right, thank you. Next item, please.
And the third item that I have for your consideration is we've partnered with the Ohio Department of Transportation and their bridge replacement program. Winridge Bridge was identified for replacement. We're at the right-of-way stage through the plan development and the programatics. Additional right-of-way and temporary construction easements will be required from four parcels to accommodate the construction slated for 2025. The need for the additional right-of-way and temporary construction easements, utility relocation, and with the replacement of the structure, they're going to provide additional width to the structure to accommodate sidewalk ADA pedestrian accommodation should they be warranted in the future that that section does not have sidewalks in that area, but it affords for that so that we're not in a position where we have to come back and rebuild that, the structure or widen it. Temporary construction easements are for the purposes of construction activities and then will be restored at the conclusion of the project.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. McGregor?
This bridge is only about 27, 28 years old. Did we look into if there's a problem with the person that built? I mean, was, was it failure? I mean, bridges should last longer than that, I think.
They, they should. It goes to the structure type that was otherwise specified for the, for the project. I can get more details on that, but a, a different structure type is, is being recommended for the replacement. So the, the structure type, I believe it's Conspan, will not be going back as a part of the, the overall improvements.
Mr. Schnitzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks in advance, Director, and to your team for kind of the, the forward thinking by adding the width to the bridge with regard to sidewalks. Well, I think that particular cul-de-sac might only serve maybe a half a dozen homes or something like that. My recollection is that's a bit of a curve and I'm sure people will appreciate not walking in the streets at some point when sidewalks are installed. I do have a question about maybe the construction process in general. Will that be done in stages or will, will those homeowners be completely disconnected by road?
So the, the intent is to do part with construction to, to provide accommodations so that they can get through as well as emergency vehicles at all times.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, also okay with consent on the first for this one?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Next up, we have items from council office. For this one, I will turn to Ms. Bowers.
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember Weaver. So Resolution 12-2024, a resolution regarding fire, community safety, firearm education and, and education on the safe storage of firearms.
and education on the safe storage of firearms, is something that I've been working on with Be Smart, which is a project associated with every town for gun safety since the beginning of the year. And this really has kind of been brought home to be an issue that does affect our community, does affect Gehanna, not just anecdotally with one-off incidents that have happened as recently as last week and last year, but also is revealed in the numbers that we have with arrests related to improper handling of firearms. So Chief Spence has been working with the school district and has been addressing safe storage action. And so I wanted to share with you the video that Chief Spence and Dr. Deagle put together. It's a minute and a half, so it won't take up too much of our time, but I wanted to share that with you first. Thank you.
Hi, I am Gehanna Jefferson Superintendent Tracy Deagle.
And I'm Gehanna Police Chief Jeff Spence. Dr. Deagle and I are back for another safety video.
That's right. This time, we wish to emphasize the importance of ensuring firearms are secured and discuss the impact that look-alike or toy weapons can have in our schools.
Gun safety is ultimately the responsibility of every gun owner. A safe storage, safe handling, and a safe mindset, all paramount. Students, please remember that possessing or plaguing with a look-alike gun can have tragic or unintended consequences. Bringing a look-alike gun onto school property is a crime, and displaying one as if it were real can potentially cause harm to you or others.
Additionally, parents, I would like you to know that our Board of Education recently passed a resolution to spur conversation about the importance of secure gun storage in order to protect our students. Research shows that securing a firearm in a gun safe, or at least with a trigger lock, can be associated with an 85% reduction in unintentional injury among children and teens. Parents, please secure your firearm and periodically check your child's bag before they go to school.
It takes all of us to keep the children in our community safe.
Thank you for doing your part.
So thank you. And this, especially as we get closer to the summer, summer typically sees an increase in both accidents at home, because children are frankly at home more in the summer, and an increase in youth violence, because they are unsupervised often in the summer. So we wanted to push forward with this resolution at this point, prior to summer break, so that we could amplify the message of the school district, encourage the continuing allocation of resources and energy to highlighting this important issue. And I think Chief Spence wanted to make a few, make a few remarks as well, as it relates especially to, to the public service project at 825.
So just from a standpoint of this video, it's actually the second video. We did one toward the end of last school year. Firearms incidents, things around threats of weapons continue to be an issue this school year. They were toward the end of last school year. Some of these incidents gain media attention or gain the attention of the community, some don't. In looking at some of these statistics, a lot of them are sobering. We have had youth-related suicides in our community over the past couple of years, and those are directly attributable to unsecure firearms in a home. Just looking back at some of the numbers since 2021, I think we've had 76 improper handling of firearms arrests. Those are arrests or warrants issued for improper handling of firearms. That's just sort of the tip of the iceberg in some of our other weapons-related offenses in Gehanna. But with that, I would say there's a lot of positive things going on. Be Smart, we work with them, continue to message in, with the school district. Our SROs are actively involved out in the buildings and with students, with staff, and continue to carry that message. So there are a lot of positive things we do plan on doing. We have given out a large number of gun locks. Unfortunately, we've kind of run out. We have another plan to issue some gun locks. You can't get those out enough, but also looking at some drawer safes and some other things that provide an extra layer of security. So we're working on that for the springtime. Again, the spring, a lot of times, you know, as families transition, there's a lot, lot going on, a lot of dynamics, especially as some, some of our youth go off to college dormitories and other places, that, you know, kind of sending out that safety reminder is important. I know there's more work to be done in this area. We continue to do it every day. Just, you know, speaking, I know that it's a little bit of a tangent, but what I would say, related to 825, and we're talking a lot about, you know, training space, and the training spaces that are going to be provided as part of that project, we're going to be able to carry that safety message. You know, we certainly have a lot of firearms owners in Gehanna, but I don't think we can hit that safety message and provide enough training. And this, these training spaces will allow us to do a lot of outreach efforts. The more that we have our professional staff who know firearms inside now, they know safety inside now. We hit on safety every time we're in our training environment. Some of you have come to our training classes, whether it's unarmed self-defense, or whether it's firearms, or whether it's de-escalation, or the Citizen Police Academy. We hit safety at every turn. This will provide us an opportunity in the outreach efforts to hit those safety messages. We can't do it enough. So with that.
Yeah. And just as kind of a wrap-up to the resolution that you have in front of you, and thank you, Chief, I also provided you with a copy of the GJPS gun safety resolution that was passed in February, along with a copy of Valparaiso, Indiana's resolution. I really appreciated Valparaiso because it is also a, it was passed with seven to zero by their council in a bipartisan support, and they really coalesced around language that was very similar to what's being presented to you today across party, across-party divides. So I felt that that was a great model. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers, and thank you, Chief Spence. Any discussion on this item? I'll just add, Chief, thank you for your efforts in this area, and your team, and for working with our schools. And thank you, Ms. Bowers, for moving this resolution forward. Are folks okay with consent next week, then? All right. Thank you very much.
And Be Smart will be here for a very brief presentation, five to eight minutes.
All right. Next up, we have items referred back to committee. So all of these items have had a first reading. I will turn first to Director Hammonds.
Thank you, Chairman Weaver, members of council. This item is to basically authorize a community incentive for, community reinvestment incentive for Burns and Scalo in CRA number three on Tech Center Drive. I will quickly recap the project for you. Burns and Scalo is a commercial roofing, siding, and solar installation company currently located in a leased building in Delaware. They would like to move to Gehanna and own their own building and bring 34 employees. Last week, I had sent a update regarding this project stating that the company would, in fact, guarantee 52 employees by the seventh year. The negotiation with the company began almost a year ago, precedes me with the previous director. But in continuing this, we felt that a 12-year, 80% incentive would keep us competitive with other communities. And considering the amount of investment of 5.5 or 5.3 for the building and another million for the purchase of the land, it was appropriate for that request, in my opinion. The CRA number three, as you may recall, does provide for up to 100% at 15 years, but the company felt that they did not need that to compete, but they did need the 12 years at 80%. Over the weekend, Councilmember Bowers had asked me to provide some information regarding what an 80% incentive would look like versus a 50%. With your permission, I would go ahead and give some of that information I provided to her today.
We all have print-out copies at our ZDAS on page two.
To not belabor the point, but I'll go through this very quickly. An 80% incentive to the company would be worth about 1.7 million for 12 years. A 50% incentive would be a little over a million for the same period. The 80% incentive would require the city to share 50% of its new income tax, or about $477,000, with the school district. The 50% incentive would require the city to share 33% of its new income tax, or about $319,000 over the 12-year period. Adding the, for the 80% incentive, adding the 20% new building taxes collected, the increased land, and so forth, the school district would receive about $800,000 over the 12-year period, or about $66,000, $67,000 annually. And that compares to the $16,000 that they receive currently for the built, the land with no building there. With a 50% incentive, the district would net about, just a little over 1 million for 12 years, or about $85,000. And again, that compares to the $16,000 that's currently collected on the land with no building there. Over the 12 years for an 80% incentive, the city would realize about $491,000 in new revenue. Most of that is income tax. And that compares to $664 that the city receives currently for the land with no building. For a 50% incentive, the city would realize about $665,000 for 12 years, or about $55,000 a year, compared to the $664 that's generated currently with no building. So Brian Xline, Vice President with the company, is here. Also, Tom Caldwell is here to answer any questions you might have that I might not be able to answer.
Thank you very much, Director. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question. I do.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Director Hammonds. So, and thank you for the comparison of 80% to 50%. I know you said it's kind of been a negotiation for a year. Just curious of how we landed on the 80% and how that compares to, I guess, other negotiations with other businesses. Is 80 kind of the norm or the standard, but how we landed at 80?
If you look back, particularly to last year, through the incentives that were negotiated and awarded, it's very, very similar to those that we did last year and the year before that. I think with the job creation, 34, and going to 52 and seven, that's not an extraordinary number, but it's a very solid number. You may recall that the abatement that we had given to Grody recently for their project, that was only going from 107 to 120, and they got a very similar incentive, and this is greater than that. So I think when we look at, when we talk about where do we start, obviously, 15 years, 100%, you know, that's a starting point. I don't think they felt that that was needed for their project. You know, they want to be good corporate citizens as well, and considering it wasn't in the hundreds, you know, we didn't think 100% was worthy either. So settling on the 80% seemed to be logical for the job and the investment, and the fact that virtually the land is generating almost nothing now. So I think both those things considered, it seemed logical.
Ms. Bowers, had a quick comment?
Yeah, just really quickly.
Yes.
Just on the, on what you're referencing as abatements that we've passed recently. So the Grody, I just would, bear with me, I think the Grody business was on, on an addition to an established business in Gehanna.
That's correct.
And the sun, some type of sun company, a roofing business on Johnstown Road, across from the VFW, near the VFW area, that was also, I believe, an addition to an existing business. And I'm struggling to remember any other abatements that we passed other perhaps than the Everett apartments.
I would have to go back and look from last year, but there were several before I arrived here.
Ortho One.
Ortho One. Of course, that was significant because of the job creation, right?
Correct.
Romanoff.
ADB Safegate.
ADB Safegate. And a lot of those had some significant job creation. The Grody one did not, but however, you know, they're, like you said, they are getting incentive to renovate their building, so they're not really adding a large amount of new revenue based on the structure itself.
Right.
The taxes are being collected as they would have been on the existing structure, so the increased valuation is not as significant as this bringing a new company, because, I guess what I'm saying is, that site is already generating significant dollars because the building already exists.
That's right.
Right.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the distinction was clear, that a number of those that were passed last year were additions or improvements on existing businesses already located in Gehanna.
Well, except for, you know, Ortho, that's a new building.
Well, Ortho was, I mean, that's a full crescent. That's a somewhat different animal.
Yeah, that's a $28 million payroll, so that's a, that's a little bit different, for sure.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I have for right now.
Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. Just a couple of questions. The application references, I believe, the 34 were full-time equivalents currently, and then I think eight, 1099 employees are independent contractors. I have a question about how those are treated currently. I don't know, Joanne, if you want to, is withholding? There's no withholding on that? Okay. And I guess the next question I have on those is, in the contract, there seems to be, at least I didn't see a reference to the 1099 independent contractors. So is the projection of 52 inclusive of that or exclusive of that?
It's my understanding, and this could be spelled out specifically in the agreement, that those 52 are FTEs.
Okay. So they would be subject to withholding, they would not be 1099 employees?
That's correct, yes.
Do we have any color on expectations for growth in 1099 employees? Again, just, it's not really a pain point, I'm just trying to wrap my head a little bit more around the estimates for growth with the company.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Nice to see you all again. Could you ask a question again, please? I want to make sure I answer.
Yeah, so in the application for the incentive, I think there's reference to the FTE, which would be subject to withholding, and then there's also like, you know, just a note about 1099 employees as well, or contractors. I think it's eight, if my memory serves me correctly. Separate from that, there's the agreement that we're being asked to approve that references an expectation of 52 full-time equivalents, you know, some years down the road, and no reference to 1099 employees. So I'm just trying to compare and contrast what we have today versus estimates of the future, and do you anticipate any growth in 1099 employees, or zero, or, you know, stay the same, or how do you see the company growing?
I would anticipate that growth being in the 10 to 12, an additional two to four, so 10 to 12 total.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Expectation, yeah.
That's it?
Thank you, Mr. Schnitzer. Any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, I have a few.
Ms. Bowers?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Xline, for coming down. I want to preface my comments by saying that I absolutely would love to see Burns and Scalo make Gehanna their home. And I do want to see job growth, and I think that the type of business that you are, you've created, you've proven track record, all makes, makes it, you a great fit, and I would certainly love to see you grow your business here. That said, one of the concerns that I have is that the unabated value over 12 years to the school district would be $1,274,553, if I did my math correctly. Director, check me on that if I'm off. But I believe those were numbers, those numbers were consistent with your numbers.
So are you, are you talking about the 80% incentive or the 50%? So, are you, are you talking about the eighty percent incentive or the fifty percent?
No, I'm talking about the unabated, the unabated realized value to the school district over twelve years would be one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Well, in the, so, for the fifty percent incentive for twelve years, the abated value is one, just a little over one million dollars. And then, the school district's portion of that is six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, the unabated portion for the school district, considering that it's fifty percent, obviously, is the same number of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight times two.
Correct. So, the fifty percent abatement is for the school district, portion only.
Correct. I'm just talking about the school district portion only for right now.
Okay.
So, the unabated value to the school district would be one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. So, if there was absolutely zero abatement on this project, if there was zero abatement on this project, and Burns and Scallow located here and built their, their structure here, the school district would realize over a twelve-year period roughly one point, just shy of one point three million.
That's correct.
Okay.
Those two numbers combined.
Yeah, so, where, where I, I get it. I understand that there has to be some kinds of trade-offs, and that sometimes we have to give things to get things, and I, and I, I get that. But where I, I'm not sure that it's, it's too big of a gap for me on the eighty percent, because the eighty percent asks the district to take roughly a five hundred thousand dollar cut, even if we're, even with the compensation agreement. So, at eighty percent, the school district's revenue over a twelve-year period is just short of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, it's almost a five hundred thousand dollar difference. And that, to me, that's just too broad of a gap to ask our school district to bear. The fifty percent incentive brings that up just over, just to be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It cuts it in half.
Yes, for, let's go back to the eighty percent incentive. As you said, they would get about eight hundred thousand dollars for the twelve-year period.
Yeah.
And for the fifty percent incentive, they would get just over a million.
Yeah.
So, so yes, there is a difference of, in that case, about two hundred thousand dollars, because we're making up some of that gap in payroll tax.
Right.
You know, when we, when we look at incentives, we always consider not only the number of jobs, but the overall investment and what it means to the parcel of land that we are attracting a company to. So, currently, the school district is getting sixteen thousand dollars a year. So, even with the eighty percent, they would get about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year in received money. So, in effect, about fifty thousand dollars more annually.
Yeah, no argument that, that anything is better than nothing, right? I, I get that. I get, but, but as stewards of land and tax dollars and the success, long-term success of our community, I, I just, I think that the half a million dollar shortfall to the district is too broad. And every other abatement, every other abatement that you've brought forward to us, we've not seen a gap like that. Be, because of the revenue that's created through the jobs, we have, I believe, seen payroll being able to make up and bring us much closer. So, there's been, it's been a net, a net zero in effect to the district. So, this is, this is where I'm struggling with this one.
I understand your viewpoint.
Yeah.
Certainly, we would love to have a world where there were no abatements, anywhere, and we wouldn't have to compete with other communities. I can't speak on behalf of the company regarding their ability to consider a fifty percent abatement, what that does to their pro forma, what that does compared to the other properties that they've been considering. Only they can answer that, and I, I don't know that they're ready to answer that tonight.
No.
But I think that that's something that they would have to consider and let us know if they would consider a reduced abatement.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything to that?
Yeah, I would. You know, one of the exciting things about growing a company is that you, you grow and you need more facilities and larger facilities, and you want those facilities to be able to support you over the next twenty, twenty-five years. The downside is, in order to build a facility like that, you have to be able to afford it today, even though it's more facility than you need today. And as we've looked at the, what the next several years are going to look like for the company, being able to afford the property and the building and all of that, and everything that that entails, where we settled on this is really where we need financially to be in order to comfortably be able to afford this. And if it drops down to a lower number than that, then we would have to do a lot of soul-searching to, to see if we could frankly afford it in Gehanna. You know, we've talked about wanting to be in Gehanna, and I, you know, grew up here and graduated from Gehanna Lincoln, and so, you know, being in Gehanna is a really attractive thing for our company and for our employees. They're excited about it also. You know, but if we were to go to a lower amount, it's something that we would have to look at a couple of other options that we have. And it's not something that we would want to do, but financially, you know, in the end, we do have dollars to account for, and so we would have to take those into account and then make a decision.
One thing that, they, you know, they have an option on a piece of property, and it is contingent on this incentive, so they wouldn't have to necessarily purchase this land at this point. So, you know, we'll continue to talk with them and, and see what their response is to this. And hopefully, well, not hopefully, we will have a, some feedback for you before next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Director, could you, based on Ms. Bowers's comment, take a look at some of the other abatements we've recently, quote-unquote, taken action on and see if you can identify that gap which she was hinting at? I think that'd be helpful for me to see.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. We could do that tomorrow.
I appreciate it. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Padova?
Yes, I have a question for you, Mr. Exline. When we're talking about Gehanna being a great place to live, work, raise your family, obviously, going to schools is one of the big factors. What are some of the things that your company does to help support the community, whether it be, you know, doing food drives, or donations, or philanthropic causes that you guys support?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a great question. One thing, one thing that we do, we have what we call Scalo Learning Center. Part of this new facility will be, we call it the Learning Center. And we bring children in, and we do different projects with them. We teach them how to use a hammer and how to use a screw gun, and just little things like that, kind of community outreach. We focus on that. And then we also do programs with local hospitals as well. And that's sort of, you know, we've been a fortunate company in, in many regards, and so that's one way that we try to give back, is by partnering with different hospitals, you know, particularly locally, a place like Children's Hospital with sick children, and things that we can do to help them as well, so.
Is there anything that you guys, that brought you to Gehanna that is of note?
Is there anything that brought us to Gehanna? Say the last part again.
So, anything that brought you to Gehanna, that you really loved about Gehanna and what we had, what we have to offer here?
As we've looked at a lot of different communities and where we might set up shop for the next, for the rest of my career, anyway, at least God willing. One of the things about Gehanna is, you know, when we talk to other communities, they don't focus on education the way Gehanna does. I mean, it's really kind of remarkable as, as a group, how focused this group is on education, on the school system, the school district. And that was one of the things that was attractive to us. You know, when, we all have kids, you know, my kids are now, gotten a little older now, but getting ready to have grandchildren. And when I look at a community and where I would want my kids to grow up, or my grandkids to grow up, this is the type of community that, that you want. I mean, this is a community that, that cares very deeply about that part of, that aspect of the community. And so, when you have a group that's this focused on education and on the school system, this is where you would want kids to grow up.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Madam Mayor.
So, obviously, the Columbus region is growing, and we are all competing for new businesses to come. How does Gehanna compare with regard to the incentives that were offered with other communities?
So, at the eighty for twelve, Gehanna is extremely competitive. Really, in line with what competing areas are. If it were to go down to the fifty percent, it would drop Gehanna below what some of the competition is able to offer, you know, particularly Columbus is one that, you know, eighty, twelve is, is pretty simple to get with Columbus. And so, eighty, twelve puts you exactly where we would hope that we would be, and it makes sense for our business model moving forward. You know, if we were to drop into that fifty percent range, it would, it would be below what some of the competition is, is readily offering. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, Columbus was seventy-five, fifteen. So, you know, overall, the numbers are pretty close to each other, even though it's a slightly different percentage annually.
Any other comments, questions? Then, I've already had first reading on this. Are folks okay moving forward with this on the next council agenda on the first?
I think it has to.
Okay.
And then, if we move to table, we would move to table.
That's fair.
Or move to amend.
Okay. We'll say regular agenda then on the first, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. All right. Next up, I believe, we're turning to Director Blackford for zoning code.
Good evening, Council, Mike Blackford.
Good evening, Director.
We've talked about zoning code quite extensively over the last month or so. I sprung on you all at our last meeting, some, some changes. And there was also some discussion about accessory dwelling units. So, just really looking on some direction on where we want to go with those, including the language that we introduced last week. If we want to amend any of that language, or ADUs, staff will get on that, and we have ample time to get you that document for the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Director. So, I, I know, at least in terms of the ADUs, I think based on some research and some outside commentary that we've seen, guidance we've received, I know there was talk of limiting the ADUs to parcels that are owner-occupied, and I believe as currently drafted, there's a restriction involving family.
Yes, sir.
I think I'd be more comfortable at this point removing that family restriction, but keeping the owner-occupied requirements of the parcel must be owner-occupied, but removing the family requirement. There's some red lines, I'd be happy to provide you and the clerk as well. I think, given your, your framing of, of this item and the number of ongoing conversations, I think it'd be ideal if we could compile all of that into one updated document based on our conversation this evening to move forward with amending and, and passing at the next meeting.
Absolutely. We'll provide a, a red line version of just the changes that we discussed tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Bowers?
So, the changes that were proposed last week, in addition to the ADU change, and then I believe Mr. Renner
Yes.
had raised some questions that were, that came up during the last public hearing.
Yes. Mr. Renner, did you want to touch on this?
Yeah, thank you. I apologize, and I, as I said, my email, and Mr. Blackford has not had a chance to review the proposed changes to the zone code. But if we want to back up a little bit, if you recall that we had a resident step forward and said that, let us all know that the proposed zoning code change would actually disallow the ground-based solar solution that he was actually considering on his property. That was a surprise to Mr. Blackford. That was a surprise to all of us, really. That same night, we did join PCFO, Power Clean Future Ohio, and one of the services that they do is they do code review. And remember, it's, it is a free service. So, I did reach out to Joe Florida and ask for advice on this, and he and the staff have actually taken, not the, a look at the proposed change, and then spelled out how we can actually amend it to go with the standards that's happening all over Ohio in looking at ground-based solar solutions. They also did provide a guidelines document, and then there was also a similar type of resolution that was passed by the City of Granville, addressing again, not just ground-based, but both the rooftop and the ground base. So, what I did, I took PCFO's recommendations, and I put them in a separate Word document, because I didn't have a Word file for the zoning code. And I just referenced, on page fifty-two, there's a table, Table fifteen, of comprehensive use table. In the zoning that's before us, the ground-based solutions are blank, which means it's not a permitted use unless you get to some of the commercials. And, but PCFO is actually recommending that these are permitted uses. And we could put in language about how we want to deal with that. And then, on page fifty-six, for the two specific codes that deal with building-mounted or ground-based, I also just copied and pasted the language in there, based on their recommendations. And some of the changes on that is, some of it is, just again, it's about focusing on what is some of the modern language. It's not needed anymore about minimizing glare, because solar panels already do that now, because the idea is, is that they want to pull in a lot of this solar energy as they can. And on ground-based systems themselves, we were looking at putting it, allowing it in the rear and inside yards as well. And then raising, instead of minimizing eight feet height, it's ten feet height. And you can read the rest of these. The other thing that's actually crucial to ground-based solar, Joe didn't have it in his email, but we talked today, and he agreed that, that this actually would be a, a good thing to consider, is adding language about decommissioning. When the ground base, when it's on our roofs, decommissioning is simply removing it and repairing the roof. How does that look like with ground-based systems? And so, you'll see, there's suggested language about how to address that, how to dress the land, and make it, or go back to normal. One thing that's probably going to be a sticking point, if, the rest of this isn't a sticking point, the foundations, I did add language in there about including the foundation, basically, the footers of these systems, down to forty-eight inches. I understand from Mr. Blackford that we probably don't do that on other things, sort of like decks, so maybe that's going too far. I don't know. My goal is basically to try to attenuate, how do we address ground-based solar systems which are very much needed in a variety of different situations? which are very much needed in a variety of different situations for residents? Not everybody can actually put solar panels on their roof. They need to be able to actually put it in the rear of their yard. And there are modern ways to deal with that, and so that's what I was trying to do. I understand that my colleagues, and more specifically, Mr. Blackford, will need time to digest this and understand, and to then we can have a better discussion, enriched discussion about the impacts of... So I think I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Director, I don't know if you want to take an opportunity to respond, I see, Madam Mayor, if you had comments?
No, I'm trying to process. Trying to understand next steps, given where we are with the zoning code, and now this, which certainly bears discussion and further research and evaluation. How does one impact the other, if at all? Or is this, do we move forward with the zoning code as proposed and continue this discussion and evaluation? You know, we all know when we pass codes, we always have to go back and amend them and revise them later on, so.
Yeah, and I am definitely more than willing to, and the resident in concern is open to that. He hasn't really put the money down and started investing in the system. But if, long as we can actually show positive direction, you know, this isn't a suggested change. So I guess to put it, to close it a little bit, we can move forward with all the other changes, but then consider the solar addition, an amendment to the proposed zoning, if that makes sense.
If I'm understanding correctly, the amendment to zoning for the solar would be post-adoption if things go well April first, but we're going to be moving in earnest on new language. That works, that's ideal for staff, since this is a little bit more robust and just looking at a few different things there. But yep, we can follow up in the very near future. Thank you.
I'd be supportive of that, and I can't thank Mr. Renner enough for bringing this forward, and also the resident who brought this to our attention. So thank you, Director, for working on this, but look forward to moving forward next week with passage of the zoning code. Yes, Mrs. McGregor?
I had a couple of things about the ADUs. Would they be allowed to, would permitted use be for a short-term rental, like an Airbnb?
So, short-term rentals and ADUs, they're separate items, and so yes, the way things are written currently, you know, an accessory dwelling unit would be eligible for the rental program. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I guess I'll just, again, reiterate my concern about the increased traffic and the increase of the use of the sewer capacity in systems that were built for so many units and so much, so many units of household use, and then we're overtaxing the sewer capacity. That would be, I'll just reiterate that, some of my concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Any other comments on...
Do you feel you have an adequate amount of information from council members to know what we're asking in terms of amendments?
Yes, I believe so. And to, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the proposed amendments that were shared last week are okay to move forward, accessory dwelling units, modification to remove the family component, that'll also be removing a definition as well to family, and then related to, but slightly separate from the zoning code rewrite, is we're going to explore in more detail the ground-based solar panels.
I did have a quick question. On the definition of owner, is that going to be the same definition that's used in the ORC, at least as county auditors use it, or...
That is the same definition in Chapter Seven for the rental registration for owner.
Which I believe was mirrored off of...
It sounded very, yes, like it might be that case.
I just know that if we're going to move forward with the ADUs being owner-occupied, we'd be relying on the auditor's office to have their data correct, and if we have a different definition, then... Okay, anything else on this item? All right, we'll see this back on regular agenda next week.
Thank you all very much.
Which will require an amendment to incorporate all of these amendments.
And I think we can put the next item back on consent.
No objections.
All right. Do we, does that require any further comments on the third item?
The zoning fee schedule?
Fee schedule? Any additional comments on the fee schedule?
No.
Okay. Back on consent for that one, then.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. We're getting there, folks. Thanks for bearing with us. All right, next up, we've got a couple of discussion items here. Number one, public arts policy, status update and discussion. Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much. So as you know, we've been working with due diligence on the development of a community-informed policy that would incorporate best practices for the city, and that would best position the city for potential legal challenges with regard to the placement of public art on city-owned property. There is a final draft of a policy, and I promised I would share that policy with you before it goes into effect and have an opportunity for discussion with you. I had, hopefully, was going to share that with you right before council, but I want you to have time to review it, and then we could come back and have discussion on it. The policy that will be implemented is really a conglomeration of the work that was done by the Mayor's Arts Advisory Panel, with input from our outside legal counsel that has had extensive experience in dealing with First Amendment, particularly with regard to government and public sector, with input from our city attorney with regard to best positioning Gehanna, and also with input from my two senior directors, Director Schultz and Director Volmer, because obviously there's going to be internal impacts with regard to operation and overall administration of the arts program and placement of arts in parks, et cetera. So the draft policy, while it looks a little bit different than the draft that the panel had provided, is substantively very much the same. I will say, we had a meeting last week with outside counsel, Madam City Attorney, Directors Volmer and Schultz, and myself, and when you get four out of five lawyers in a room, language changes. So we know, we've seen that from this day. So wording might be a little bit different, but substantively, it's largely the same. The most critical update is the inclusion of a paragraph that speaks to identifying public art that is, again, placed on city-owned property, that that would be the city's government speech, which again is the recommended approach to presenting the best legal defense for the city in the event of potential challenges. As I said, we'll share the draft with you, so we have an opportunity for discussion. I'd also like to share that with Member of the Arts Panel, to talk with them and walk through with them what they had provided, and where we are today, and how we ended up where we are today. But I know Director Volmer also is prepared, just to give you a brief overview of the basic tenants of the policy that has been drafted.
Welcome back, Director.
Good morning, afternoon, and evening.
Good morning.
As I told Ms. Powers earlier, I saw her. Okay, so I just have a brief overview of the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions as well. So the policy was formatted in the standard policy format that our other city policies take shape. So the first section of the policy refers to the purpose. So this is one of the purpose statements that is one of three in the policy. These are a combination of edits in what was in the original policy provided as well. So the purpose of the city of Gehanna values the importance of art and adding to the vibrancy of the community, and as owner of property throughout the city, the city has the opportunity to make spaces available to advance art and enhance the beauty of the city. The next section of the policy has definitions, but I'm going to go into the policy itself and talk about the committee that will be established. So the policy calls for the Public Arts Advisory Committee, or the PAC, to be created. It would be voting members serving two-year terms of Gehanna residents, similar to other boards. So two members appointed by the mayor, and two members appointed by city council, and one member representative from the Gehanna Area Arts Council. And then the other person on the committee, a non-voting member, is the program administrator, which is the mayor would appoint, designate from city staff to serve as the program administrator for that committee. The functions of the PAC would be to develop and manage the process for the selection of public art for display on city-owned property, consistent with the city's procurement policies and procedures, engage Gehanna residents in the selection process, evaluate safety and maintenance concerns, review and make recommendations to the city's program administrator regarding the approval of submissions to be displayed, provide input to the program administrator in the selection of site for public art, and then assist in developing and implementing promotion strategy, including public dedication events after installation of public art. The functions of the program administrator would be to make final determinations on the recommendations received from the committee, make final determination in consultation with others, such as perhaps the Parks Division, who would be installing these items on safety and maintenance, provide project administration during design review, refinement, construction, and installation, and then upon completion, acquire and follow the city's procurement policies to ensure the city owns all the public art in accordance, sorry, with the procurement policy. The next section talks about artists and artist selection, and how the panel will evaluate the art that is solicited. They would look at the artistic merit of the project, the project management capabilities of the artist, expected lifespans of the project, and then the construction durability, maintenance, and safety of the project. And then the last section of the policy talks about ownership of art, which I had mentioned before, that all ownership rights of public art created, purchased, or donated through this process shall bask in the city upon receipt and acceptance of the public art, and then we would reserve, the city would reserve the right to remove or alter the work to ensure public safety, like we do in, on city property now. So that is a brief overview of the highlights of the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if Mayor would like to add anything else. Oh, sorry, I do have one more slide. My bad. Thanks, Kevin. The next steps would be adoption of the policy by the mayor, and then appointment of those PAC members, so they could begin the work of the committee.
And before that would be some discussion with all of you as well, and the Arts Panel I mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Any discussion on this item?
So just with having just seen this right now, just a couple, like, first questions and thoughts. Would the acceptance of art especially, so, just to make sure I understand, we're talking about permanent installations on city property? We're not talking about snowplows or...
So the policy actually has definitions, one for temporary art, which is artwork, and there's a lengthier definition that I know our city attorney worked with us on, but to paraphrase it, temporary artwork would be artwork that's not intended to be in place for more than a year, or within a year that it would be removed. So snowplows, the story trail, bright blocks, those types of things. Permanent artwork would be artwork that is intended, not intended to be removed within one year from the time it's placed. So sculptures and things that have a longer-lasting life. So temporary artwork would give more flexibility to be able to, again, address issues with our schools, work with our schools, give them direction on, hey, we need artwork on to illustrate this story. Gives us more flexibility and an ability to be more nimble with that. But it makes, it does define and separate the two of those.
Would there be any action by council in accepting a piece of art?
There would not be any need for council action.
Okay.
Except for the appropriation of dollars, if dollars were appropriated for...
Correct.
The panel talked a lot about providing dollars to artists to even submit for a project, and then the eventual, actual full cost, so that would be council action.
Okay, so there would be, I guess, review of allocation of those dollars through our budgeting process, through our quarterly reports, that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
So, sorry, I guess I'm also trying to wrap my head around all of this here for the first time. I guess my immediate thought is, what are the benefits of forming this PACC rather than using the Arts Council that Gehanna already has? I know that someone in our conversations had mentioned just that it would be appointed by council and mayor, but is there any other reasons for doing that, aside from just the appointments?
Sure. I don't know if you remember, we did have outside legal counsel, Donald Brey, was here and spoke to council in these chambers, and spoke specifically about the fact that it was his recommendation not to have an outside organization that was then not accountable to the city. By council appointing folks and the mayor appointing folks, there is more accountability to the city, because we are talking about the placement of public art on city-owned property. That doesn't mean that there's not a way that the PAC, for short, wouldn't work with the Arts Council, they could. And a member of the Arts, that's why we left a seat for the Arts Council as a member of the PAC as well, to help create those relationships. But the recommendation of legal counsel was not to have an independent organization be that outside body.
And based on the amount of projects, public art, things like that, that we do currently in the city, what, how frequently would you see this group holding meetings?
I think that might be too early to tell yet. I mean, they would need on an as-is-needed basis.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be a yearly thing to plan for the year, if that makes sense. We'd have to get it up and running to see how it works and what the cadence of that looks like.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Just to be clear, this has absolutely, this policy has absolutely zero bearing on private property owners
Correct.
Displaying art. And has there been any changes to our zoning code related to murals on private property, not city-owned? Has there been anything related to...
So in my review of the zoning code, it reflects that artwork that's displayed on private business owners' land and property would be constrained by the same zoning requirements as any other signage, with the exception of a public art mural, would be something that the city would have to designate as a public art mural, and so this policy would also, it would go to the PACC, the PAC, to designate something as a public mural, if that was to be a permanent installation on the side of a building, for example. It would have to be designated as a public art mural to exempt it from the restrictions of the zoning signage code.
So that could be done purely by executive function? It would not require any kind of council action?
So it's my understanding that the designation by the city could be either an administrative action or a council action
Okay.
To designate something, a public mural, but please, somebody, I mean, Mayor, or Director Blackford, if he's still here. I don't see him anymore.
Are you kidding? He's done, he leaves.
That's fine.
Before there's any more changes to the zoning code, so.
As is written, it just indicates that it needs to be designated by the city, so I would read that and interpret that as either the administration or council could designate that.
So either the administration or council could designate a public mural, a public mural?
Yes.
So, for example, you think the side of signatures?
Right.
But that would, but that, but signatures could also go through the zoning process to get a permit to paint their own building if they wanted to?
That is my understanding.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I lost my next question.
But if I may ask a quick follow-up. That would fall under signage requirements, correct, which, and correct me if I'm wrong, has its own set of restrictions, such as lettering, or the, you can't do a business. So for, in your example, signatures could not have a mural on the side that celebrated the businesses of old Gehanna on the side, because it mentions businesses.
Correct. So the definition of public mural does not allow trademarks, logos, or any copyrighted material?
Thank you, trademarks and logos.
That would, and that would be universal. Correct.
Is there anticipated to be any payment to these PAC members?
Payment? No, no, because this would be a volunteer, volunteer organization. So we're not looking for that. So we're not looking for that?
And so the PAC would make a recommendation to-
Program administrator that would, right now, be Director Volmer, actually.
Could, would there be anything stopping the project administrator, program administrator, from getting recommendations from citizen groups or individual residents to take under consideration?
For, like-
Public art? I mean, if a citizen group wanted to come forward and propose to you directly, I mean, you-
Under this policy, I would send it through the committee.
Send it through the committee?
Mm-hmm.
And if the committee liked it, thought it was a good idea, then they put their stamp of approval on it, and you say, this looks great, let's go forward?
Right. The, the administration would have to approve, like, the site, right? We can't be, we can't put stuff anywhere somebody wants, so. And that's one of the tasks of the PAC as well, is to determine sites for public art.
Could you work collaboratively with the Arts Council as an external entity? I mean, if they came forward with a proposal and then you routed it through the PAC?
Yeah, I believe so. It'd be the same as anybody else bringing something forward. The idea that was talked about in the mayor's advisory panel was that there would be eventually, hopefully, funds allocated and that the city would put out a solicitation and say, like, we're putting up X piece of, we want to put some art at this location, submit. That was the idea that they talked about at that panel. And the Arts Council would have a representative too, so they would be able to speak on behalf of the council as well.
Sure. Right. And so I guess to make sure I understand, with the public murals, it can either be a council action or it can be an administrative action, just like we accepted public art last year? Is my understanding on that correct?
Yes. Under the zoning code, it just has to be designated by the city.
Okay.
Yes.
On private property.
For the private property, murals.
So can council take action to place public art on public property?
It would have to go through the, no.
Okay.
Is the short answer.
Okay.
It would go through the policy, the administrative policy, which is the committee.
But we can allocate funding to the committee?
Yes.
Got it.
I think Ms. Jones had a comment.
Yeah. Can you flip back to the, I guess, responsibilities of the PAC slide right before that one functions? I guess, does the PAC, will they have, I don't know, bylaws or something, or is the policy there, I guess, what's the governing rules of the PAC?
They would have to establish those.
Okay. Okay.
So like the develop and manage the process for selection, that group would need to, sorry, come up with those, but it would need to be consistent with our procurement policy. So if something's going to be over $10,000, we have to get quotes. If it's going to be over a certain amount of dollars, it comes before this body.
Okay. And engaging Gehanna residents that in the selection process, so that means the selection process of the art forgiven event or thing, or?
Yeah, many, many of these were taken directly from the policy that the panel put forward and are similar to what other cities have in their boards, commissions, they call it different things, committees.
Okay. And we'll have, we're going to have an opportunity to read the whole policy, correct?
I will send it to you, yes. But we were making some final edits, and I know our city attorney had caught something that we added probably about 5:30. So I'll send it to you soon as the meeting's over, and then we can have another discussion if you'd like.
Just real quick, so based on this, it looks like the PAC would make a recommendation, and I'm assuming in their bylaws that they established, that can be a majority vote, unanimous vote, however they decide they want to structure it, and that recommendation at the moment would go to you, Director Volmer, and you can choose to accept that recommendation, not accept it, and-
Yeah, I would make sure they followed the policy and the city's procurement policy and ensure that the safety of the community and public, public safety is going to be maintained, which is also the criteria that is on another slide as well. So they would have taken that into consideration as well.
So your recommendation would be based solely on what's in the policy for consideration by the PAC?
Right. I would make, I would make sure, just like I do every other day, that our policies are being followed.
Understood. I appreciate that. Ms. Jones?
So is the PAC, I guess, asking for the art? Where does that happen? Like, who is, like, I'm using, I don't know, the bright blocks and the Jazz Festival. Is it the PAC's responsibility to decide that they want art for that? Or can, can people's, I guess we kind of ask that, can someone still bring forward ideas or options for art?
Yeah, someone could bring an idea or option forward, and then it would run through the committee.
Okay.
The bright blocks would be a little bit of a different situation. It's almost a hybrid because the bright blocks are created as part of a separate event that is run by an outside organization, and it's kind of entertainment during the event. It's the placement of those then into the parks that becomes the issue. So just the event itself is temporary artwork. If they were to then be placed in the parks for more than a year, then that would have to run through the PAC as to, in terms of that placement there.
Mr. Renner?
Yeah, thank you. So listening to the dialogue and everything, and it reminded me, can you expand upon the public safety component? How does art affect public safety?
For example, right now, there are sculptures in the park with snow fencing around them because they are, could be considered a public nuisance, so kids would want to climb on some of those structures. I don't know if you've seen a couple of them moving in the high wind if you're standing too close to those. Those are some examples from some things that are currently up that have to have protective barriers put around them.
Making sure the materials are sturdy enough for their placement, that they're not going to create an issue.
So we're really talking about the physical?
Right. There's many aspects to it. It's not just, it's not just the design. I mean, when you think about all the different types of artwork that could be created, and if you're placing something, you know, it's not just some painting on a wall, it could be a sculpture in a park.
Yeah.
So is it, you know, is it built to withstand winds and, you know, and the weather and making sure that kids who are in the park are safe from it? As, as Director Volmer said, we, we currently have some, some sculptures right now that are what I would call attractive nuisances.
I understand that. So just to be clear, it's not about the content of the art, it's just about the physicalness, if you will, what it's being applied to, or if it's a sculpture, is it a freestanding and is it safe and that kind of stuff?
Right.
But it has nothing to do with content?
Yeah, it's about the public safety. There are insurance requirements as well. We can't put something that's, well, we shouldn't, I guess.
Makes sense. Thank you.
There's a content moderation piece to the policy.
Now, do you want, do you want to speak to that? Because we had that conversation with Erin. This is not about content moderation. That's why the, that's, that's why the provision with regard to government speech is particularly important.
So essentially, the, the policy designates everything as government speech, meaning that it is consistent with the values of the city and that we reserve the right, as a city, to decline art that is inconsistent. So in that sense, is a content moderation, reservation of rights. However, the purpose of the committee and the panel is to use a viewpoint-neutral criteria to select and solicit art that the city would then put up. However, the, the designation of it as government speech is what gives us the allowance that, essentially, we do reserve the right, if something were to be inconsistent with the values of the city, that we could say no. So the, so the government speech component is, yes, available to be content moderation. However, the purpose of the panel is to use an objective and viewpoint-neutral criteria to select art.
So we've, we've talked multiple, about multiple existing projects that exist, some of which were, are unsafe and some of which were controversial for other reasons. Will this PAC be reviewing existing installations of public art?
The, first of all, I want to go back and just correct something. The issue, this issue that came up was never about what was the content, it was making sure that we had a policy in place so that when there were other challenges of artwork that we did not want to go up, that we would have a defensible position for this and making sure that the city was protected in that regard. What is up is up now. I don't believe that we need to go revisit anything. I believe that it's up. We've adopted that. The storybook trail that will go forward later this year is temporary artwork, so that, I believe, can, we can move forward with our schools to do that. But, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Attorney, I believe that, that, if there's a different legal position that we need to take, or if we need to do something to adopt whatever is up now as government speech, then we would need to do that. I, I'll look for your direction.
I do not. I believe that, it is my position that the manner in which we selected art, the manner it was created and the parameters that were put on the art are already government speech. And, and the council did take action last year to declare certain pieces as government speech. That stands for itself. So everything that is up and already displayed is already there. There is no necessity to go back and declare it government speech. The process by which it was procured or obtained and displayed was government speech already. This is a precautionary measure moving forward to declare and be clear that when we do display art on public property, that it is government speech to protect us from an extremist situation that the city would want to preserve the right to say no in that situation. Does that answer the question?
It answers the question. I, I want, I don't want to belabor this point. I, I do not think that it is objectively agreed upon that what happened last year was content neutral or about policy. It was about specific panels that were pulled while others remained. And so I, I just respectfully disagree, Mayor, but I don't want to let that go without there being a point made that the perception of at least me, and I think my colleagues, was not that it was about just the absence of policy. So, so that's all I'll say about that.
Ms. Padova?
I want to make sure that I am hearing this correctly, that short-term installments do not go through this PAC. This is just for long-term, something more than one year?
Correct.
Okay. So then, the bright blocks, those, as long as they are not being put in any parks for more than a year, would those be able to go into the parks here soon, this spring? Is there?
My understanding is that our Parks and Recreation Department has reached out to the Arts Council to ask about their intent for weatherizing those pieces, both from this, last year, 2023, and 2022 as well, and then to present some suggested locations as to where those would be placed. I don't believe there had been an answer received yet, so once that, that information is provided, they could start to move forward.
So, to be clear, what the Arts Council needs to provide the city with is weatherizing them and also-
If the paintings are going to be placed outside in rain-
Yeah.
-and what, what have you, the, the paintings need to be weatherized and made sure that they're waterproof.
Yeah.
And I believe that was the issue for 2022 bright blocks, and as well as, my understanding is, an email was sent, month or two ago? To our Director Schultz.
The email was sent February 28th.
And we just, just need some answers in terms of working, working together to make that happen, so we know where those need to go.
Okay. And have there been bright blocks placed in parks, like, years ago? So did they used to come to the city weatherized already? Or was there, like, confusion on who was, whose responsibility that was?
Director Schultz could speak to that.
I'll get most of these details correct. Yes, I do believe the 2022 bright blocks and the 2023 bright blocks, there were few requests made for the weatherization of those bright blocks, especially in 2022, in order for those to be placed. Then the issues and challenges that we had last year prevented the 20, those were being talked about, about being weatherized and also locations being, being selected as well. So in anticipation of the policy being done, our Parks and Recreation folks have reached out to the Arts Council in regards to weatherizing and then working, working cooperatively to find locations for both the 2022 and the 2023 bright blocks. And to my knowledge, the email has not been returned at this particular point.
Do you know how many bright blocks we currently have in storage?
I don't.
No idea. Okay.
So the city does want to work, what I'm hearing, though, is that the city very much wants to work in good faith with the Arts Council to facilitate the weatherization of the bright blocks and get them installed as soon as possible. Is that a correct-
Correct.
-summation? Okay.
Correct. And that work was going on prior to-
Yeah.
-this time last year? Yes.
All right. We, we would, I would really like to see, I think that that would help mend fences for both-
Correct.
And I think that would be really important. So I would encourage both the Arts Council and the city to continue to move forward on getting that done and making accommodations to get it completed so those, that art can be displayed.
If the Parks and Rec folks haven't reached out already a second time, then I'll make sure that that happens tomorrow.
I don't, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
I, I thought, and the question was asked just a moment ago by Ms. Padova, so no temporary art projects would go, be processed through the PAC?
No.
No?
They would, I would follow the same administrative procedure, which the-
Got it.
The artistic merit-
The program administrator, but not necessarily to the-
For the PAC.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Mr. Renner, you had been waiting patiently.
Yeah, no, thank you. This is all a really good discussion, and I just wanted to actually say thank you to the administration and to my colleagues to still have a really thorough discussion about this. So I am happy that my question about the public safety and content now then eluded, and we had a better discussion about that. And I think I heard that anything that council has already adapted as a public speech is public speech, correct?
Public speech, correct.
Okay. We heard from a litany of residents about how horrible it was to put up those panels and nothing, to date, nothing. So content is, being content-free and being able to express is very, very, very important to me. And having our residents, being able to, and especially our children, it's very, very important to me. So with that, one of the other things that we talked about, and it was also very near and dear to my heart, is removing politics from art. And I appreciate this PAC, but who actually makes the final decision? Is it you?
The policy calls for the program administrator to review the recommendations.
And you would serve, is that function?
I believe that's what the mayor said, yes.
Okay. So, just, I, because this is important. Mayor, you know, you and I have talked about this, removing politics out of art. So the, whatever the PAC says, yes, we want to do this, you're going to carry that forward, or you're going to make a decision on-
As long as it meets the criteria.
As long as it meets the criteria of the guidelines that they set up.
Correct. And that all the procurement policies and everything else were followed correctly, yes.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. And thank you again for having this very good, slightly awkward conversation about this, but thank you.
Any other comments this evening on this? Ms. Padova?
I know. So I know this is going to come back to us- So I know this is going to come back to us, but I feel like some of my, not to anybody's fault, some of my questions haven't been answered. So I would like to get some, a follow-up on how many bright, how many bright blocks we currently have in our possession. This has been important to me because there, I met a mother last fall whose daughter did the live painting at Creekside, was super excited about it. She was such, it boosted her confidence so much at the beginning. She was kind of nervous about it, by the end she was really excited about it. And they have been so excited to take their family to the park and see this and haven't been able to do so. With it being the end of March here, Creekside happening again in June, I am getting very nervous that as we approach that, I don't know what the current conversation is with the Arts Council and CVB on whether or not they will be offering that at the festival. But I know it is something that's very popular and has attracted a lot of attention. So I would really like to see it going. And I would really hate to have another parent reaching out to me, you know, next fall or this time next year. So I, I really want to make sure that we are able to have a plan for how many we have, what parks they can go into, how long, and for the ones hopefully coming up this summer. So if we can get more information on that for our next meeting, I would love to see some sort of actual plan on what is happening with these.
I have not heard from Visi Gahanah as to whether or not there's any intention to include that in this year's Blues and Jazz Festival. And as Director Schultz said, we will, we will get a count as to what we have. I, I know that, I've seen the emails that went, that were sent for 2022 and 2023 bright blocks. So we can get a handle on how many, how many there are to be placed. And, and yes, Councilwoman Bowers, we want to work collaboratively and, and help facilitate getting whatever needs to be done with those so that they can be protected and placed. Thank you.
I think Mr. Schnatz, oh, Mr. Schnatz, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a couple of other members of council have mentioned, we, we don't have the policy in front of us. Obviously, it's what we saw on the screen there, so. But I didn't want to waste the opportunity to maybe ask a bit about mechanically how this is intended or envisioned to flow. There's been some comment about the city maybe soliciting and then there's been some comment about people coming to the city and saying they want to do something on public property. So I don't know who's best to answer this question. If it's Madam City Attorney, if it's Madam Mayor, if it's Director Volmer. Are both of those on the table? Or is the intent that the city will say, hey, we have this site identified, here are the parameters, we're interested in, in, you know, getting a response and then that goes through the PAC?
The policy has, under Artist and Artist Selection for Acquisition, direct purchase and donation. So if somebody were to approach us and say, we want to do XYZ at XYZ location, that would, I guess in my mind, that's a donation unless they're asking us to pay them for it. Because then if they're asking us for, us to pay them for it, then it would need to go through more of a, a selection process. But the policy allows for both the solicitation of art in a certain spot and a donation, which is, I think, what some folks have been describing as, this group wants to put this here. To me, that's a donation.
Not all donations are cost-free though, so for example?
Oh, nothing's cost-free.
Well, if it's a structure and it requires some form of maintenance or whatever. So I guess I just want to make sure that there is the ability for the city to pump the brakes, that this isn't just opening the floodgates.
Correct.
If anybody wants to put anything anywhere, that the PAC then takes on a life of its own.
Yeah, that, they would make the recommendation to the program administrator. So if during the discussions, there's a safety concern or something else like that myself, or if Mr. Guthrie was with me as the park superintendent, he would bring up the safety concerns as well.
Ms. McGregor?
When you're talking about the, I guess particularly the bright blocks, it would be, it would not be the city's responsibility to make sure they're weatherproof. It would be the artist or the people wanting to put them in the park's responsibility to make sure they were weather, weatherproof.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. I'll just conclude this item by saying, you know, expressing my thanks, administration, city attorney, our outside counsel, certainly the volunteer panel members that the mayor appointed. Look forward to having the opportunity to review the full policy and it sounds like the administration's open to feedback on that when, when we were able to actually review that. It's certainly been a long time coming. It's been a tough road at times and tough subject. So looking forward to moving the city forward in a way that benefits the entire community. I, if possible, I would request of the administration, I, I know it's not public art, but I feel there's a confusion with private murals, possible, you know, large mural on the side of a building that's privately owned and where that comes in with possibly the public art, you know, policy now. But what's the pros, cons, benefits of doing it one way, getting designated the other? That'd be helpful, just because I've seen some recent chatter on social media about private businesses looking to do that. So if that's something that needs to be clarified in our zoning code as a public art installation or just an art installation separate from signage, because I know that's a different, different creature, I would appreciate that if we could tease that out before the next time.
The city attorney and I can have further discussion around that and I know that was part of the challenge to separating public art versus art on private property. They're two different things.
Absolutely. Nothing further on that item. Look forward to that coming back at the next committee. So thank you. And for our final item of the evening, President Bowers.
Yes, thank you. So on that note, I have circulated to council members and senior administration a committee schedule for the rest of 2024. We, as you know, we adopted amended council rules that allows us a bit more flexibility to schedule committee meetings on different days and potentially following our regular council meetings, which tend to be a little bit shorter, although they haven't as late. So the, we will not have a committee meeting on April 8th. Our next committee meeting is scheduled for April 22nd. So that would, we would come back on that, on this item at that point in time. And then we will have no committee meeting the week of Memorial Day week.
We were talking before the meeting about trying to make it back on Eclipse Day.
Nancy and I were talking.
Steve and I were talking about being able to make it back on Eclipse Day.
Now you don't have to. Yes.
No, thank you, because?
Sit in traffic on 71 with everybody else.
Right, right, right. Because I was imagining that we were probably going to go up to Avon Lake some.
Yes, between, hopefully everyone gets to enjoy the solar eclipse on, on April 8th. It is an event of a lifetime and so hopefully people can get out and see it. But yes, traffic is going to be awful. So thank you to the administration for collaborating with us to eliminate that April 8th meeting. It's also spring break for Gahan schools. So I think a number of us might be traveling later in the week. So a great, a great opportunity for us to just bypass that meeting. No committee meeting the week of Memorial Day. And then as you may recall, I had expressed my wishes to skip committee meetings in July and stack them with the regular meetings on the 1st and the 15th. So there will be, there will be potentially some committee meetings in July following our regular meetings and then it should continue fairly uninterrupted the rest of the year until a final scheduled committee meeting on Monday, December 9th. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Okay, we will, we are, Jeremy and Sophia did pull, I think, numbers of waiver and emergency legislation. So we are benchmarking to know where we've been and if this causes a spike in difficulty with emergency and waiver, we, we do have that benchmarked for years past and so we'll be able to keep track of that data going forward and adjust this if we need to. Thanks.
Any additional discussion on that? Thank you, President Bowers. Anything else for the committee? Saying none, we will adjourn.